Share that with us, please.
Yes, thank you, Jim. The board email account is in receipt of the following email from Jeff Faber, Lake Orion Education Association President. It reads as follows. Dear Lake Orion School Board members, we are just over two months away from what is shaping up to be the most challenging school year of any of our lifetimes. There will be new health protocols in place, record-setting funding cuts, and the looming fear of the return of the dangerous COVID virus. On top of all these uncertainties, with the retirement of Marion Genopoulos, I now have concerns about how quickly we will have a new superintendent in place to steer our ship. I cannot help but notice the board's tepid selection of our finalists, who are, by all accounts, devoted and talented educators. I'm also troubled that one of our very own Lake Orion Dragons, whom educationally speaking has been the architect of where we stand as a district today, didn't even warrant a second look. For the first time in a very long time, I am unsure about where we, as a district, are heading. With this unprecedented number of unknowns before us, I implore the board to keep the process moving and put a leader in place, be it one of these two finalists or an interim. We have a lot of work to do here in Lake Orion and no time to waste. Jeff Faber, Lake Orion Education Association President.
All right, thank you. So that concludes public participation, and we will move on to our first second interview this evening. And we will welcome Mr. Ben Kirby back with us.
You ready for me to let him into the meeting?
Please.
Okay.
Hello, I made it in.
All right, welcome back.
Glad to be here. Thanks for having me.
All right, we're glad you're here. Our format will be similar to what we did the other evening, and you know, I will welcome you again. We're welcoming Ben Kirby back for a second round interview. Mr. Kirby is currently Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services for South Lyon Community Schools in South Lyon, Michigan. This evening, let me just review our format. The interview may take up to 75 minutes. There will be 15 questions. Most will be questions asked of each of the candidates this evening. However, some will be unique to each candidate. Toward the end of the interview, time permitting, we will give the candidate an opportunity to ask questions of the board and make closing remarks. As before, trustee Scott Taylor will let us know if time's becoming an issue and keep us on pace. As the board hears from each candidate, weighs this critical decision, it will be doing so through the lens of the candidate profile that was developed with considerable input from our stakeholders. Our intent is to identify the candidate that best fits this profile, which board members have at hand. Audience feedback may be submitted through an online forum found on the district's homepage. Although the task of choosing our next superintendent is the responsibility of the Board Board of Education's representatives of our community, we value and consider the input of our stakeholders in the process. While we are not seeking recommendations as to which individuals should be hired, we would like your input as to strengths and reservations about each of the candidates. Our format on the questions will be a little bit different this evening, rather than bunching questions and one board member reading it. We will go through the questions with alternating board members, and I'd ask our board to, when the answer concludes, we just move on to the next question, and if you're designated, read that, if you'd kindly read that. So I'll start things off, Mr. Kirby. Since deciding to become a candidate and participating in the first round interviews, what have you observed and/or learned about our district that has impressed you most favorably?
Oh, that can take up the whole 75 minutes, but I will do my best to try to get that down.
Do your best.
Obviously, it's a very reputable district, a very high achieving, as far as the things that I've learned, you know, favorably, the website has just been amazing. You know, the information in there is just terrific. The celebrations that are in there, the marketing that is being done, I think is really impressive and says a lot about the district. I think something that really struck me was the sellout for soldiers program that is running one of the schools. I think that is just really, really cool and really unique, and I hope the teacher gets the national attention that she, you know, aspires for, as she mentioned in their interview, but that is just a great, great program. While I was in the district and, you know, visiting the schools, the community really impressed me. I really don't think it had to do with the Dairy Queen dessert that I had with me as I was driving around the district, but the buildings were very impressive. I was really impacted by the number of citizens out as families exercising. The community parks had people in them, you know, the trails. I mean, there were just people everywhere, and that was just, that really struck me, and that was very impressive as far as a healthy culture and community. It was really impressive to me that, you know, the district has a diversity coordinator, you know, not as a, you know, reactive to the things that are going on in society. That's clearly forward-thinking on the leadership and the district's part. And I think that that will bode well as we move forward and support all those students within our community. The political Advocate Committee, I think that that is something that is just, you know, it's really unique, and that's part of the reason there was a presentation, M A S A, done on it. It was something that is beneficial, you know, not only to Lake Orion Community Schools, but all public schools across our state. I've learned that the cabinet is really strong. There are some great leaders there, a lot of experience, and there are certainly, there's certainly a lot of history, and a lot of work has been accomplished, not only out of the cabinet, but, you know, all of the staff members in the district. It's nice, there's, you know, a number of innovations that have been shown, and certainly the effort of flex scheduling at the high school. I really applaud that effort, and I know that it's, you know, kind of going back and and going to relook at it, but I think that it's, you know, an opportunity that I think students will find to be advantageous if it fits into their big picture. The bond in the school, the sinking fund, I think that that is something that really speaks well of the community support that we have at Lake Orion. You know, obviously, with the financial struggles that are potentially looming, to have those funds to really make our facilities something that we're proud of, and I think that that is something that speaks really highly, and I think it will address some needs moving forward. There's a notion of build it, and they will come, and certainly having beautiful facilities and current facilities will impact people. You know, summer school for everybody, you know, at each level as an option. I think that that is something, especially in this day and age with the COVID-19. The whole child focus, you know, that I'm seeing within the district, all of the supports that are in place, you know, certainly when students are in the classroom, but I'm very confident that those supports were in place through this new virtual environment that we've, that we've all flourished through. And then certainly the elementary, you know, student achievement on the state standardized test, you know, it's certainly a snapshot in time, but that definitely is something that, you know, stuck out to me. And I learned about the district. Parent University is great. The partnerships, I have seen some partnerships that I see as impressive, certainly Bosch, you know, partnering at Weber Elementary. I think that's kind of a unique relationship. And then certainly the celebrations that are seen through the Inside the Dragon broadcast. I think that's great, and heck, who doesn't love Mushard, Dan, and the Dogs? You know, it was, it was great to see that, too. So those are really the things that stuck out, that stick out to me when I think about, you know, the district favorably, and I would just kind of like to back up a little bit, and just thank you for having me this evening, and it's certainly an honor to be here and further our discussions about this position. There's a lot to celebrate at Lake Orion Community Schools.
Good evening, Mr. Kirby. I have your second question of the night.
Okay.
You provided the board with a 90-day transition plan. When you take a long-range view, what would be your vision for Lake Orion Community Schools? What would be the same and/or different from what is currently in place three to five years from now?
It is, you know, certainly the district has a strategic plan that is in place, and in that, I think it really, you know, has focused the work, focused the work for the district. There was a lot of input, I'm confident, that was put in through that process as you go through and you establish your mission, your vision, you know, your values, your goals, your beliefs. Part of building a vision is, it's not about, it's not about me. You know, being in a leadership position, I'll never, I'll never be one that says that I have all the answers, and this is certainly a case of that. Part of building a vision is understanding what's working well and what's not. When you look at, you know, the high school has their vision for Lake Orion High School graduate, collaborative team member, knowledgeable thinker, healthy individual, lifelong learner, productive worker, responsible citizen, effective communication, thoughtful problem solver. Those are all really key characteristics, and I don't know the history and how long that has all been in place. What will, what will happen is, as I go through in the 90-day plan, as you see all of the areas about building relationships in the school and the community and the student achievement, what's going to be key is listening, listening to our students, listening to our parents, listening to our community, and listening to our business owners. That is what's going to build the vision, and I have in my mind, you know, a lot of the characteristics, and a lot of times when you talk about what a successful, you know, graduate is or person is, you know, a lot of times you can get back to the same, the exact same piece, and, you know, ultimately for me, that's what's going to help build the vision. So I can't tell you that it's going to be X, Y, and Z, but I can tell you that all of those voices are going to tell us what we need in order to continue to help our students be successful, and that's what's going to really help develop the vision, you know, our current vision statement, educating our students for challenges of today and tomorrow. You know, so logical. We don't, we don't know what tomorrow, you know, looks like. We're preparing our kids for competition all across the world, and I think that that is definitely a difference in the last 10, 15 years, you know, from when I first started in education. So ultimately, the vision would be, would be built after listening, you know, to the staff, to the students, to the community, to the parents, and really hearing what they feel and business owners, what they feel we need to do to develop our students to be successful. Ultimately, we're in all of this for our students, and that's what we should be focusing on, how we get them to where they need to be to be their best version of themselves.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ben. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
And my question is, in any leadership transition, there is an opportunity to amplify existing successes and challenge some norms. Given that we are a destination district known for academic success, how will you go about building on strengths while progressively leading us to new heights that will set us apart from other districts?
There's a lot into that question. If you could just read it again to make sure that I get all the pieces.
Absolutely, and I'll try to go slow.
No, well, yeah, I'm the second time through, so I should be okay.
Okay, I'm a fast talker, so.
All right.
In any leadership transition, there is an opportunity to amplify existing successes and challenge some norms. Given that we are a destination district known for academic success, how will you go about building on strengths while progressively leading us to new heights that will set us apart from other districts?
This is certainly a high-achieving district, and I think that one of the benefits that I have is South Lyon also is a very successful district. And, you know, making the transition to South Lyon was one that, you know, took me out of my comfort zone. You know, we talked a little bit about what my, you know, experiences have been. I went to a very high-achieving district, and I mentioned this in round one. You can't do today's job using today's methods and excel tomorrow, and that's something that I really believe. And part of what is to do that, I'll go back a little bit. So with the 90-day plan, I'm going to hear about all of the great things that are going to, you know, that are already in place. The piece that I'm really going to hear also, when I'm having one-on-one conversations with building principals and, you know, cabinet members and board members, is I'm going to hear about what, what people's real feelings are about how we can grow as a district. And that's the piece that, that will really help, and then we will be able to innovate through, you know, professional development to guide what some of this need is necessary. I did the, the listening tour, for lack of a better term, you know, when I went to South Lyon, and I had, there was a few themes, and so I got through, you know, an abbreviated 90-day plan. I got through it, and I went back to my cabinet and I said, or our cabinet, and said, you know, these are some themes, you know, we're a high-achieving district, but there's a lot of need to address our mathematics curriculum, and there's a lot of need to address the leadership in this curricular area. We have an administrative team that is just chomping at the bit to be grown, that wants professional development, and I think that that's a piece that, that helps you, you know, innovate, that helps people get the confidence to move forward and really challenge. And the thing that I did, and admittedly, does not make people comfortable, and certainly when you go to a district that is highly successful, when you ask the question of why, it makes people really uncomfortable, but what it does is it makes people understand maybe a process or a reason, and to continue to, to, you know, dive into that is really something that, that I have done, and again, isn't necessarily, you know, popular as you're going through it, but what it does do is challenge the thinking, and that allows you to continue to, you know, get, get to that edge, find our growth edge. You know, I talked a little bit about, or excuse me, the packet I sent you. You saw some books that I've completed, and one of them's the 15 invaluable laws of growth. And, you know, that's one of the pieces to that is just, you know, continually, you know, working through to grow not only yourself, but as an organization, and you have to really reflect on why you do things and how you do things. Ultimately, and I think that's, that's really the piece, and then all of the great things that are there, you have to celebrate, because, again, you're doing it every day. You're doing it in a cycle, year after year after year. You think that it's, you know, it's just something that, you know, that we do, but it's something that, you know, makes a memory for, for students, makes a memory for families, and you really have to be able to celebrate those things, too. So I would just say to you that, that celebrating the great things that we do, you know, through our communications, marketing, and then certainly asking a lot of questions and challenging the reasons, and being open to finding new ways to improve and innovate will, will help us address, you know, all of the things that were in that question. You were kind enough to read to me twice.
Hello, Ben. Our Board of Education values input from all stakeholders. In your first interview, you stated that it is important not to be complacent in success, as that can inhibit growth. Please share with us how you would meaningfully engage staff, students, and parents to help avoid complacency and better serve our stakeholders.
Yeah, but, you know, similar to the previous question, it's, it's the element of, I talked a little bit about, I believe I talked about, you know, superintendent's advisory type of a setup for, for students. I also, you know, talked about that for community members and business. And, you know, I too value, you know, the input and the relationships with the stakeholders. I think that's going to be, you know, certainly really key, but just, just listening to the different things that people are telling us. You know, that's the ability to challenge. Everybody lives Lake Orion Community Schools, because that's, that's what we've done. And I, I think it's important to commend that I think that the leadership, not only the cabinet, but the building-level leaders, they've done things to challenge and certainly to, you know, work to innovate. I think the flex scheduling is an example of that, but, you know, having the, having the standing ability, like through, through a committee, the superintendent's advisory that I talked about for students and meeting with the student leadership and the community, having that, not just one time, to build a vision statement and things like that, but to continue to meet and have those be your, you know, your listening ears, your feedback loop. That's oftentimes something that we forget about in education is the feedback loop, and, and, you know, whether it be with staff or its students and whatnot, but really having those people telling us and sharing with us what it is that we need to do to grow and be better, I think will help us move forward. The complacency, you know, like you talked about, it would be easy just to sit back and say, you know, we, you know, we score in the state standardized test, you know, third highest in Oakland County, you know, in being done with that, but when you really break things down, when you're looking at instruction, you're looking at the, the achievement in the, in the day-to-day, and I think that, you know, our staff knows that, and I think those are the things that, that really help us get out of that complacent area, if it so exists.
Mr. Kirby, welcome back.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for being here. Competition to public schools in the form of choice, charter schools, private schools, and online programs is increasing today. How, in your opinion, can we remain a district of choice in this very competitive marketplace? Thank you, sir.
So really, this goes around the, the idea of competition, and we're at a good, good point in the, in the race, so to speak. There's, we're in a really good spot. I talked a little bit about the enrollment, which is somewhat of a concern without knowing the whole narrative and the story moving forward, because that's certainly a problem and potentially a problem, but the answer to that is known through, again, listening and trying to understand a little bit more. But as far as the competition, some of the things that, you know, I mentioned that, that drew my interest, you know, to the school, school system, the flex scheduling, that's something, doing those types of things, offering opportunities that, that aren't the norm, is really, really important. I think that the whole COVID-19 piece and the work that has been completed in the district with, with looking at the different delivery models, that is going to help not only us grow, but others, but how, how it's going to help us is that we're going to do a great job with having other options to help continue the education for the kids. The notion of, and I mentioned it earlier, you know, build it and they will come. The fact that we're, you know, basically over the next, or for 10 years, we're going to have close to $200 million to address our facility needs, some of the great, you know, updates, improvements, those things all will make a difference. I do think that there is the, you know, the potential of, you know, of growth, you know, within the school district and the community. I think it's something that we have to make sure that we stay on top of, so we don't get, you know, a certain elementary school that's jam-packed, and we want to make sure that we're giving off the, you know, the optics that we're able to support more families. You know, certainly having, you know, more programs and relationships is going to be very important, and ultimately, you know, having the, the school spirit and the pride. But I do think, again, and I talked about it at length, but the idea of having business owners giving us, being part of that feedback loop, I think is really going to help us as well to be a district that people will continue to come to. We're losing some students. I talked about that in interview one, you know, but we're certainly gaining some students, too. And I think the answer, you know, really lies in understanding why it is that, you know, some of the students have left. You know, why have they, why have they gone to Oxford, and why have they gone to Clarksville or Clarkston? Is that just a matter of location, or is it a program that we didn't offer? Those are things that the, you know, the current leadership may know the answer to, but those are going to be ways to address, you know, making a difference moving forward as far as being a school of choice. There could be some really good answers in that. And again, certainly listening to kids, students, I think is really, really important, because they, they tell us what it is that the neighbors are doing that they wish that, that their mom and dad would do. So I think it's just really important that we, you know, listen and be willing to be open to taking some risk and potentially fail forward on some things in order to, you know, continue to be the school of choice.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirby, nice to see you again. Thanks for taking the time to come and talk with us.
Happy to be here.
A question for you. How would you ensure that all students receive the guidance, support, and instruction they need to meet their individual needs, from students with learning challenges to those who are advanced learners?
Certainly, the, the goal of, of all school systems, and, you know, how do, how do we do that? We do that through, you know, our classrooms, and we do that through partnerships with home. We do that through really knowing our students. We do that through relationships with our students. We do that through support with the social-emotional programs that the district has in place and the respective staff members that, that address those areas. Those, those are all elements that help, help a student, a child learn. And every, every student has individual, you know, needs, obviously, and so as, as a district, our classroom teachers are really the most impactful for the student learning. And the, the culture and the climate within those classrooms is of paramount importance. And, you know, whether that's through, you know, positive support, whatever they do to build their, their community, that's the piece that helps students really get the, the learning that they need. They have a safe environment. They have a safe environment to be curious. They have a safe environment to ask questions. They have a safe environment to accept support. Obviously, you know, there are, there are students that need additional programming to really get to the highest and best version of themselves. Much of that can be accomplished through the talent within our district. There may be opportunities, you know, whether it's International Academy or, you know, some other programs, could be some online opportunities to continue to challenge students. And then, you know, certainly there are students that, you know, we need to make accommodations for and interventions to help, help them be successful, and ultimately, including everybody in our programs is going to be essential, and making sure that everybody's getting the grade-level instruction at a minimum is, is going to be of paramount importance. And so our teachers are, you know, like I said, are really the important piece in that, and, you know, I haven't yet met an educator that doesn't want to do a great job, and our classroom teachers are a great example of that, and they will do everything that they can, you know, get to the edge of that cliff to really help every single student. And my job as superintendent is to support a culture and a climate that allows that to happen. A culture and climate that, that listens to parents, that listens to what the staff's needs are, listens to what the administration sees that their staff needs, and how to support our students. The success of the district, which obviously is around our students, is my number-one goal as the superintendent of schools.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hey, Ben. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Next question. Please describe for us the budget development process that you would recommend for Lake Orion Community Schools, and how you would account for uncertainties regarding enrollment and funding at the time the budget is adopted.
Yeah. School finance, school budgets, it's certainly a, a best guess, it seems at times when you talk with, you know, directors of finance and, and whatnot. And this year certainly has been very challenging and I've really been in tune with that. You know, obviously with human resources being 85%, I've been a member of Michigan school business officials for a number of years, as well as, you know, some other organizations. But the School Business Officials Organization talks a lot about, you know, the budgeting and that. When you're talking about budgets, it's about priorities. You're developing what your priorities are as a district. And, and you do that, you really start at the, the cabinet level. Obviously, there's going to be some assumptions that are made, you know, the, the per pupil amount. There's going to be an assumption for that. And that is the, the big guess right now, right? So in, in today's day and age, we're really looking at, you know, three, probably three different scenarios is really what's been recommended. But you're looking at the per pupil, you're looking at a, an educated guess on what your enrollment is. But you start that out at the cabinet level. And certainly when you get into reductions, you have to have that conversation at the cabinet level to start with. Then I feel like you go to the administrative team. They have a big picture of, of, you know, all of them do of their buildings. Some do of their district or, or multiple buildings or multiple departments. And then I think that information that you gain there and, and assuming as you go through with the administration that there's, when you're dealing with a reduction process, that you're getting some staff input at that time. Your administrative team is being a conduit to you, for you, for feedback loop back to the cabinet. But you're getting information from the staff, you know, they may know some things that they may ask, why in the world do we do this? It seems like, you know, it costs us a lot of money. And they might recognize some things that can be reduced. People are usually very good at looking in other lanes for reductions. But one of the things we've really tried to do is, is make sure we stay, stay in our, our school and, and focus on the things that we can control when we're going through these processes. But I think that information then comes back to cabinet. And then ultimately cabinet is going to, you know, the cabinet team and the assistant superintendent for finance and business will, you know, take that information to the, to the finance committee we have established and then, and then certainly, you know, the board of education, you know, for consideration. So, you know, the revenue consensus hearing has a lot to do with it in May, you know, this year. It, unlike most years, didn't have much information as far as being helpful. You know, things are in such flux. But I think also when you're going through reductions, I, I think you owe it to the district to, you know, really do some staffing studies, you know, there's, there's organizations or individuals that actually can, you know, come in to your organization and take a look, you know, are you right sized or are you heavy in, you know, certain areas? Like when you're looking at a, you know, a school building or a central office and whatnot, and they can really analyze the data for you. And, and certainly there's some data analytics tools, which they're valuable. At the same time, you have to be cautious as to what those are saying because it's all about the, the data in when you're reading the data out. So, you know, that's the process, you know, that I would use. It's the cabinet, admin team, cabinet, finance committee, board, and then certainly revise.
Thank you.
Right. What should we provide beyond the basics to ensure that all students, whatever path they may choose, are solidly prepared for success following their graduation from high school?
I think it goes to, again, the, the vision, you know, the profile that we have of our graduate. And I think that that's really something that, you know, when I talk about, talk about vision, I think that that's really where we, where we need to go. We need to know what it is that we as a district think is a successful graduate. And I think, you know, we talked a little bit, or I talked earlier about the, the vision of a graduate that's listed, you know, as the, on the high school website. And those are the pieces that, that we need to do. We need to make sure that we have kids having opportunities to, you know, work together as, as teams, you know, be collaborative, you know, really, really studying the skills that they need based on the, the feedback we're getting from our, from our business owners in, in the community. I think that that's really important. In keeping in mind that it's not all about college. There are, you know, certainly a great majority of our students will go to college, but there are certainly, you know, students that will go on to trades or take over businesses. I think the, the idea of exit interviews, you know, that we have in the district is really an outstanding opportunity for our kids. And, and that allows them to, you know, have some confidence and has, allows them to really talk about what it is that they have experienced, what they've done. And, you know, really listening to them as far as what their experience is like. I think to help students be successful, I think it's really important that we have, you know, an adult advocate for, for the students as they, you know, work their, their way through the high school, certainly. But again, I think when you build that, that, that vision and the profile of the graduate, that is really what's going to give you that information about what it is we need to give our students in order to be solidly prepared for success. And, and, and again, following up on some data as those kids go on a year after school, two years after school, four years after school, and really measuring how successful they have been. If they've chosen, you know, to go to college, were able to get, you know, some of that, that data through the clearinghouse. You know, it's also possible to do follow-up surveys. But again, using, using our students as a feedback loop is really important to understand if we're addressing what is necessary in order for them to be successful. Cause successful Mr. Weedman has a lot of different definitions for a lot of different, you know, students. And, and so it's hard to say that we were successful with that, that one student or that one student without including that, those students in on that, that information.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. And your next question is this. Many new theories, innovations, and philosophies have been in it. I'm going to start over.
All right.
Many new theories, innovations, and philosophies have been introduced into educational delivery in the last decade. What new idea do you feel has been the most effective in improving learning?
You know, success isn't always about, you know, the shiny program. It's not about, you know, bringing in something new. And so that, that at times, you know, can get, you know, misunderstood. There, there's no one program that works the best all across, you know, for all students. Otherwise, you know, schools would definitely look different. I think that student engagement is just something that is really, really essential. And I think that instead of identifying one theory, strategy, that would be the area that those theories and strategies would address or innovation is the student engagement. You know, we're, we're serving a population right now that wants immediate gratification. It's just like this. You know, I used to do kindergarten roundup where, you know, we would go through and we would test every, every student, you know, academically, socially, emotionally, and all those things. And one of the pieces to that, that our staff did when they did it is they actually had a piece of chocolate on the, on the table to see if the kid could not, if the student could not, you know, grab at it and, and, you know, show some patience, patience and things. And I think that's kind of the same premise that we're dealing with now is our students want gratification, like right away. They, they want, they want the success. They want to find the, the quick route to it. So there's a real need for stimulation for a lot of kids. That stimulation is, you know, through technology. And I think that the technology pieces that, that we've introduced into the classroom, and there's a number of different pieces, you know, whether it's a smart board, Almo, document camera, you know, apps, things like that. But I think it's the technology piece. It's only as valuable as the, the training that our teachers get, however. And I think, you know, that's why it's a, it's a little bit of a struggle. But if I, if I was to push on something, it would be the engagement that we as educators are able to achieve through the various different pieces of technology that have been introduced and really embracing that technology, not, not just to use it, but to use it for learning. It's, it's easy enough to learn, or excuse me, it's easy enough to use technology. It's a little bit more of a challenge to use it in a way that it's engaging kids and engaging students and also, you know, really inspiring them and, and giving them, you know, some hope for some, some learning. So I, I would say that it's got to be the technology piece. Really with the engagement that's necessary for the students that we serve today.
Thank you. Okay. I have another long one, so I'm going to go slow. In your previous interview, you presented as a collaborative leader who seeks to provide guidance and mentoring to administration and staff to help them fill in the gaps, gaps and improve as needed. What is your approach when guidance and mentoring is not achieving the desired effect and improvement that you deem to be essential and not, and is not taking place?
I can sum, sum that up. Are you basically asking how do you hold people accountable? Is that really what you're getting at? So it, it's really important. It's, it's a really important piece. And I, education is not about perfection, but education is about growing. And, and we have to keep that in mind. And we're, when we're working with, with staff, it's no different. And it doesn't matter what level you're, you're talking about. If it's a, you know, whatever level employee that we're talking about, every single person, just like our students deserve the opportunity to A, know what the, what the goal is. B, to know whether or not they're, they're meeting that goal and to see, you know, what are the next steps that they're going to do because they're not meeting the goal? And the expectation is that they are going to meet the goal. So it, it's a matter of giving timely and specific feedback to that staff person. Again, whether it's a leader or, you know, whatever the position is, you, you have to give timely and, and specific feedback. And it can't be at the end of the year. You know, I'm a person that, you know, communicates regularly. And, you know, you, you're right, I have talked about that and the coaching. That is really the, the, you know, the piece of it. It's the coaching. And that's, that's the feedback. That's the time, the specific, you know. And as a, as a past coach, you know, even, even in athletics, it's a great example of how you make constant improvements. You're constantly giving feedback, constantly giving feedback. And then you're performing and then you're getting feedback. And so that's really what it is. It's time, it's timely and specific feedback, not just you're not doing a good job, but I need you to get better at, because our goal is, and at this point, you're, you are here. What are some steps that you're going to take in order to get to our goal? We're looking at that needing to be completed by X date. You know, we have to give, you know, an, an end line. If we're going to give expectations, they need to know, you know, what that, what that goal is to meet those expectations. And ultimately, if they don't meet those expectations, you have to figure out, is it a matter of will or is it a matter of skill? Does the employee, you know, are they just not motivated? Or is the employee one that is just, it need, they need some additional skills? And if they need additional skills, I think that's where it comes down where we as a district, you know, we're trying to grow our staff. And so if we identify where, where to grow somebody, that, that's great because that's part of what we do as a district. Now, if we're trying to grow them and trying to grow them and trying to grow them and it's not, that's not growing, you know, to the level that we need, then, you know, you get to the point where perhaps you're doing some career counseling. You know, whether it's a, a matter of within the district or in another profession. One thing about educators is, is, you know, they all have huge hearts and, and they all want to get better. I, I, again, 27 years in education, I can count on one hand when I, when I thought, you know, that, that person doesn't have the heart for kids that, you know, that I had hoped that they, that they would have. And, and educators are, are unique in that way. And most of them really, really want to do a great job. And they, a lot of them are waiting for you to tell, tell them that they need to do X, Y, and Z. Just a, just a little example, just as far as expectations, you got to have expectations. When I was high school principal, I shared with you, you know, I was, I came in and I had a teacher who, who I happened to know, but they had, and this was a learning piece for me. So they had, they worked with our, the, the students in the emotionally impaired classroom. And, and the, the staff member was dressed in really casually, like she had on, she had on shorts. And so I had to do some, some work to try to understand, okay, culture, climate, trying to figure this out. It was the very beginning. Why does she think it's okay that she's wearing shorts? So I, you know, contacted the old, the old high school principal to kind of talk through some things. And ultimately the person was doing it because they were always allowed to do it and nobody ever told them they couldn't do it. And like for me, it wasn't, I, I didn't let it go because it was, I didn't think that was the, the best thing for our students. It wasn't the best, you know, professional look, obviously. But that was a, a great learning point for me. I, I can't sit there and fester because this person is not dressing professionally if I don't give them some specific feedback about, you know, what professional looks like. And ultimately we had a conversation and, and the staff person said, yeah, I've kind of been waiting a few years for somebody to tell me that, that's not appropriate. But I figured I'd keep doing it as long as I could. Mike, well, good for you, but starting tomorrow, you know, this is what it's going to look like, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, things went well and, you know, the teacher's a very successful teacher. And again, huge heart, but, you know, did, did the things that they thought was, was appropriate.
What did you find to be most enlightening about moving from Ionia, a smaller rural district, to South Lyon, a larger suburban district?
Most enlightening. I, I guess if you could, Mr. Singer, just tell me a little bit, and I don't know if you, if you wrote the question or somebody else did, but tell me a little bit more about what you mean by enlightening.
Enlightening, I, I had also considered the word most interesting. Just to get a flavor of a, a small town person, you said born and raised in Ionia, worked most of your career there, then you came over to the suburbs. It's, it's a different environment.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. That, that really helps. So I, I definitely appreciate that. The, the students that, that I, they served in Ionia, it was a, it was a, poverty level was about 23% at the time. So free and reduced lunch was about 63% when I left, you know, the district. When I go to South Lyon, you know, the, the, you know, free and reduced lunch, you know, we're in the teens. So that's significantly different. So with that, the supports that are necessary are certainly different. You know, I, I've had the opportunity in working in, you know, a smaller school in West Michigan where we have opportunities to, to really address the achievement gap in, in some, you know, innovative ways. And part of that is you get, you know, additional funds and whatnot through Title I and you're able to do that. So as far as most interesting is, you know, we're serving different kids. We're serving where families have really high expectations of, of a great education and great education programs. We talked a little bit about, you know, the ESSA and the root problem of ESSA. If, if you don't address that, that poverty piece, then the expectation piece is never going to, you know, really surface. So that was something that was definitely different. I had more phone calls about, you know, you know, teachers challenging their, their student and, and things along those lines. And that is definitely a difference. The expectations are higher and that's something that I really, you know, appreciated. I think the other thing in, in one of my purposes was to see the big organization. You know, South Lyons, roughly 8,800 students, 13 buildings. So, you know, quite, quite close to Lake Orion. Lake Orion's a, you know, a little bit smaller. But, but I think the concept is the same. Making change in organizations that are larger would be, you know, similar to if, when I was in Ionia, I would say that, you know, making changes, making change, you know, you kind of can do it with an SUV. Where if you make a change in South Lyon, you're kind of, you have an 18. where if you make a change in South Lyon, you're kinda, you have an eighteen-wheel, eighteen-wheeler as you kinda navigate, you know, through the roads cuz you have different stakeholder groups, you have more committees that you're working through, more voices to be heard. So I, I think that was, you know, probably the most enlightening or most interesting piece. You know, both districts had extremely, you know, caring, caring staff. I think really, if I could, Mr. Singer, just, it's the, it's the, the change, the, the process of change and the, the, the political angle for things. And then certainly the expectations are, are certainly higher. I think those two things probably, without further thought, are the two that jump out at me the most.
What if any concerns do you have about being superintendent of the Lake Orion Community Schools? And beyond funding, what do you believe could be the greatest potential threat to your success?
I like how you took funding right off the table because that's obvious, everybody's gonna wanna talk about that. Well, and I guess I should say everybody, meaning the two of us, right? As far as, you know, challenges. You know, my goal's gonna be the success of the district. And, you know, challenges are there and what we have to do is we have to address what those challenges are. You know, there's much, there's, there's a lot in place that's really, really great, you know, the staff's great, student achievements, something to be really proud of. But, you know, to be, to be very candid, which I'm always gonna be, you know, the, when I looked at this position, one of the things that was paused for concern right away for me was the fact that there's four board members up for election. And, you know, that's a, that's a concern because obviously leadership is, you know, really, really important. And consistency and understanding expectations and, and knowing, you know, what people expect, what their goals are. That is really, really important, you know, to me to have consistency. I think that's the best way to serve students. And again, as you look at my career, you can see that, that I believe that that consistency is really important. And that goes for the, the leadership of the district. So that's certainly, you know, a concern for me. As far as, you know, I talked a little bit about the leadership team is, is really strong. I, I really feel that from all the research that I've done. You know, I, I, I respect the leadership that's there. I, you know, and I, I recognize that, you know, if I was, you know, fortunate enough and blessed to, to get this job offer, that, that I need to make a phone call right away to, to, you know, the internal candidate for this position. And, and I think that that is, you know, really, 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 I could say really, a lot of times, important. It's important for the success of the district. The, the candidate was, you know, very integral to a lot of the success that went into all of the things that I'm talking about tonight and the things that I talked about the first night and the things that a number of candidates talked about, I'm sure. You know, these positions are, the position of superintendent is unlike no other in the respect that, you know, seven people make a decision as to who they're comfortable with, working day-to-day in the position. And, you know, I just went through that. I, I, I don't think it's a mystery that you guys, you know, you know that I aspired to be a superintendent and, and went through the process, you know, in South Lyon. And so, you know, with that, one of the things I didn't know during that time is there was another internal candidate without being an employee, you know, within the district, you know, the, the gentleman, you know, that was hired, Mr. Archibald, he's gonna do a wonderful job, I'm, I'm very confident in, in his abilities. And that was a, you know, a challenge for me because, you know, I know what I've done and I know the success that, that I can have. And I know the support that I have, that I had going through the process. And so for me, one of the things, and everybody handles those situations differently, but when I'm making, you know, that phone call, that's really, really important to the, to, to my success, to the success of this district. I need to really listen, I need to listen on how I can, how I can support all of the members of the, the team that were in support. And I need to understand what I can do to help, you know, individuals grow. And also, one of the, the super key things that helped me is that I need to reframe the situation. And, and, and I think I, through our conversations, that's really what I need to have happen so that we can, can move forward. And I think, and again, I'm just being very candid, I think that that is something that has to, has to be addressed because all of the leadership is going to make a difference in the success that we have as a district. As far as, you know, further threat, the, the fact that we haven't been face-to-face, you know, for all, all you know, I'm sitting here with gym shorts and white socks on or slippers. You, you guys have never seen me outside of the, the blessings of technology. I assure you that I'm fully dressed and I actually have on my dress shoes and dark socks and I match and everything. But that is something that is, you know, that is just different. You know, I, I went to the community to visit the schools cuz I wanted to feel it. I didn't wanna read about it, I didn't want to have other people tell me about it. Granted, you know, going to Dairy Queen was a bonus, but I wanted to make sure that I was comfortable. This is just as much about, you know, me selecting, you know, Lake Orion as it is about the seven of you selecting me. And so it's just really important for me that we have that, that trust. And that's gonna take some time and it's gonna take more time because when we meet for the first time, it may be to, to discuss contract, if that's, you know, the case. But whatever that is, I'm not gonna have the, the ability to be as visible as what I would want likely at the start and on July twentieth, quite potentially, you know, whether it be the visibility in the community or the visibility, you know, with staff, you know, not being able to have gatherings. And shoot, if I'm inside, I'm gonna be only half visible cuz I'm gonna have a face mask on probably. But, you know, it's just really important to, to build trust is to, to be in person and to, to feel the nonverbals as we're communicating and, you know, the connections. Ultimately, those are potential barriers, you know, that, that you asked about. And I think every one of those things can be overcome. You know, I'm very confident in, in who I am and what I am and who is there at Lake Orion. And, and be happy to hit, you know, these concerns and threats head-on and, and help us be successful.
Thank you for your very detailed answer, Mr. Kirby, thank you very much.
Mr. Kirby, how would you go about reaching governance team consensus when there are strong differences in opinion among members of the Board of Education? How would you do so in a way that respects these differences, strengthens relationships, and helps a diverse group of individuals to function as a highly effective team?
One of the things that, that I did as far as, you know, preparation for this interview was I watched a number of, of board meetings, you know, and that's an opportunity that I have with, with the communications team as much as they've, they've put together. So I would recognize that there are differing, you know, opinions. Again, you're dealing with seven people, even, even this whole process. I recognize that there, you know, were some different thoughts about, you know, how to proceed, you know, from the, from the posting timeframe to, you know, where we're at today. And I think that one of the things I really recognize is that there is a level of, what it appears to me is that there's a level of respect and trust and you listen to each other well. And I think that that's one of the pieces that is gonna be really essential, is that, you know, we, we continue to foster that. As far as my ninety-day plan, you know, I think it's gonna be really important and, and it's in there. But me, meeting individually with each board member, I think that that's gonna be really important for me to understand what's important and what are, what are the different differences. I'm not gonna hear about their, understand really the differences that each of you have, if you do have some, in a, in a public board meeting, I don't wanna, you know, learn about those for the first time in a public board meeting. I wanna know what are, what are the, the sacred cows or what are the things that were maybe at odds? And, and in order to do that, I need to learn what's important to each board member. I need to learn and will, will likely, if we follow the ninety-day plan, you know, have, have some work sessions and really talk through what are some protocols, you know, what are some, you know, whether you call them, you know, ground rules or whatever process you wanna use. But when we have meetings and we have discussions, how can you have constructive dissent and, and still move forward? And, and ultimately, the piece is gonna have to be, you know, listening to one another and really making sure that we're respecting one another, we're making a decision. When the decision is made, we move forward and we support that. We support that publicly, publicly and we support the decision that's best for our students and, and we move forward, you know, move forward with that. I really feel strongly that, that we will develop through, you know, through our meetings and I'm sure MLI will be happy to, you know, help facilitate, you know, that work moving forward. That's gonna be an essential step, you know, and I need to know and you need to know, you know, we need to know how to communicate. You know, so that's gonna be a really essential step and, and ultimately, listen, you know, listening and being respectful of one another is, is really gonna be key.
Thank you.
Ben, if you are offered this position and accept, how will your commitment to Lake Orion Community Schools be evident? And how long might we expect you to stay?
You guys really have made a lot of unique questions. So, so, a- and this is not a hard question for me, I, I will say that, I, as I'm, as I'm digesting this, I'm like, oh, that, that was, wasn't on any, you know, you know, when you are looking at, at different things. So how would you know, I'm sorry, so I accept the position, how would my commitment be evidenced, basically? So it'll be very clear, I, I will be there, I will be present, I'll hit the ground running. I know, and I know you've seen my ninety-day plan, you know, and if, if some of that has to be done, you know, through, you know, Zoom or Google Hangout or whatever it is, I really, I wanna start the listening tour, I wanna, I really wanna hit the ground learning, you know, like I, like I talked about. I think that you, you saw that I want to, you know, work with the board and certainly the Communications Department to have, have the, you know, the announcement and, you know, are there things that we, we're gonna do with the community? Is there gonna be a, a time that I can, you know, meet the community? You know, the old school would be, you know, have an open house. I, I don't know if you can, you know, if we can do that in this particular environment, you know? If not, then perhaps it's a, it's a message that, you know, that I deliver electronically and send that out to parents and, and then we kinda do some catch-up. Me learning what's going on in the community, what kind of events that I can get to so that I can, you know, start meeting people, getting my face out there. Certainly, it's gonna be important for me to, you know, secure a place to sleep while I'm there. And I think that, you know, that's gonna be, you know, something I, you know, that, that's gonna be a big piece for me. I gotta, I gotta get that figured out. I mean, certainly, you know, I'm, I'm an hour away with, you know, normal traffic, you know, when I'm at my, at my cottage in Howell. And one of the things that I think you're gonna hear this week is, is my work ethic. And you're gonna hear about my visibility and that's not gonna be any different. In fact, it, it's probably gonna be a little bit on steroids because I have so much to learn about Lake Orion and, and I'm very motivated to be successful. I'm very motivated to help Lake Orion continue to be successful and, and get to the level of greatness that, that, you know, the community expects. As far as, I may not appear it, but I'm close to being eligible for, for AARP. But you, you, again, you look through my career and my, my goal is not to go and get to the next step. So you saw me grow that in Ionia to get to the next position for responsibility. This is a destination district for me and this is a district, my, my goal when I left Ionia was to, you know, identify a place that still had a family feel, a caring environment, a rural, you know, feel. And the, South Lyon and Lake Orion are very similar with that. And I think that that is, you know, again, what drew me. I, I've, I've applied to, I haven't applied to other, other positions because I wanna find the right position. If I didn't feel like Lake Orion was the school district in which I was gonna call home and finish, I wouldn't have applied. And so ultimately, we, what you're gonna get out of me is you're gonna get, you know, as long as you'll have me, basically. I don't have aspirations, you know, to retire in three years, four years, five years. I'm, I, I don't know that I'm gonna be as dedicated as, you know, Marion Genopoulos, as she, you know, over fifty years. I, I don't, I don't foresee that, but I'm not the type of person that is gonna sit around well. I don't anticipate retiring anytime, anytime soon and I certainly have no aspirations of moving on to bigger and better things. I feel like bigger and better is where we're, you know, who I'm talking to today. I, I would tell you that if you have me, I, I would be, you know, ten to, ten to twelve years, you know, Lord willing, good health. You know, that would be, that would be my thinking.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Kirby, I have question fifteen for you.
But thank you for telling me that cuz I've lost track.
Here it is.
And Bray, just to say, we, we have ten minutes right now, so we're good on time.
All right, okay, here it goes. There is no more important and impactful decision for a Board of Education than selecting its next superintendent. If we were to choose you, what is it about your leadership that would cause us to reflect five years from now and consider this to be one of the best decisions we ever made?
Well, I, I would tell you this, you're not gonna come to that conclusion in five years, it will be sooner than that. I, I think again, you'll recognize that I'm gonna, you know, hit the ground learning. I'm gonna listen well and, and, you know, we're gonna make changes that are necessary to, you know, help our students be successful. As far as looking back to, you know, some of the things that you said, I think that you're gonna recognize that I'm, that I'm trustworthy. There's gonna be a high level of trust, you know, with the Board of Education, there's gonna be a level of trust with the community, with the staff. The students are gonna recognize me, they're gonna know who I am, you know, whether, you know, be through a selfie or, you know, being at a game or visiting their classroom, reading to them, whatever that might be. You know, you're gonna see that, you're gonna look back at the fact and you're gonna hear that I'm approachable, again, visible. One of the things that we haven't talked about and I haven't mentioned, but I think you're gonna look back and you're gonna say, he has emotional intelligence, he, he understands people and he can read people and he does a good job. He's calm, he's gonna recognize how to diffuse situations and help people, you know, overcome, you know, whatever crisis it is. It may not look like a crisis to an observer, but, you know, quite typically when we're, you know, dealing with individuals, they're in crisis. It may not, you know, again, we may not feel like it's as much of a crisis as they do, but you're gonna see me handling people with dignity and respect and being available. You're gonna hear the staff talk about, you know, me being supportive. And you're gonna talk, you're gonna hear, you know, that I'm somebody, and I, and I think you're gonna hear that this week. But I'm somebody that has, you know, humility, I'm the combination. I talked a little bit about, you know, leaderships, about competence and character, and I think you're gonna hear that and you're gonna see that. You're gonna, you're gonna recognize that I'm a servant leader and you're gonna recognize that our student achievement is where we expect. We're gonna set, you know, goals. We're going to set, you know, goals. Uh, we're going to have a a profile of a graduate. We're going to know what it would look like at the high school level. We're going to know, you know, what it should look like when they, what a student should look like when they, you know, leave middle school. You know, we're going to know what they should look like when they leave our elementary schools. And ultimately, uh, you know, that's how you develop your portrait of a graduate. Uh, you'll look, you'll look back and you'll see that the facility projects, which are vast, uh, you know, we're, you know, maybe we're really proud of the projects that that we're going to, um, you know, get finished. Uh, and I also think that you're going to say that, um, that I really do a good job of giving people, uh, hope to be successful. And and I really think that's, you know, as an educator, we we have to inspire, uh, kids to, uh, you know, to be great, to be the best, uh, version of themselves. And that's the same with staff, that's what we have to do. We have to give them the tools to be successful. We have to give them the tools to have kids, uh, have hope. Um, and and I think those are the things that, when you look back, uh, but I I I really don't feel like it's going to be five years, uh, that you're you're having that conversation with with one another.
Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
You're muted, Jim.
Thank you. Mr. Kirby, the the final minutes here is the time that, uh, if you have questions for us or if you'd like to make a a final comment to us, this would be the time to do it.
Uh, how much time do I have, President Weeman, roughly? I don't even know exactly.
Scott?
Five fifty.
Okay, fifty.
All right, great. So a- again, uh, you know, through the through the research I've done, I mean, I've talked a lot about the the things that I know of the district. I I'm going to learn more, I have a lot, you know, I don't have a lot of questions for you. I, that was part of my job since, uh, you know, this whole process has started is to really learn. And so I'm not going to, uh, you know, pose any questions with you. But I I would just like to, you know, uh, thank, uh, the Board of Education, certainly the staff. Uh, I know there's a number of people that are that are watching, I'm sure, in the community and the students. This is going to be a really busy, uh, week for you, but it'll be a great week. You know, in the end, I think that you'll, uh, find that I fit the profile uh, that has been developed by the stakeholders of Lake Orion, uh, Community Schools and and yourself. I I think, you know, through, uh, you know, through the interviews with me, that, you know, the feedback that you're going to hear after our meetings tomorrow. I think, uh, in the committees that you're going to, uh, talk with on, uh, Thursday, you're going to see that my, uh, K twelve leadership experience is is there. Uh, you're going to see a a number of examples or you have seen a number of examples. You're going to see that I'm student centered, uh, that I'm a collaborative leader, uh, that I am, uh, you know, the combination of of character and competence, that I value relationships, uh, that I'm a servant leader, uh, I can make tough decisions. Um, you know, I value teamwork, listening, uh, humor is important to me, I'm growth minded. I provided a, uh, you know, bit of, uh, professional development for you to kind of get a picture. And I'm a good communicator, approachable, learner, humble. Um, I have a wide range of experiences, uh, to help influence others, to give students hope and and to be the best version of themselves. Uh, you know, I really look forward to making and strengthening relationships with the Board of Ed, uh, the community, um, elected officials, the staff, students. Uh, and that'll happen through the the, you know, listening tours that I've spoken about, the, uh, different advisory committees. And and I know there's a number of committees that are already in place and, you know, trying to fit, uh, you know, how we do that so that we have a quality feedback loop. You know, that that's a task that I will, uh, overcome. And I just believe the voice of people, you know, will help us set the real vision, you know, as I spoke of. Uh, I think it's going to be really important, you know, that we establish what we want, uh, for our graduates. That that is why we serve and do what we do. We we want to have a goal, what is the portrait of a graduate? And I I think that we're going to have that, uh, established. To prepare for my, uh, central office success, you know, I I worked on the grounds crew. You know, I I I was a coach, uh, I was a teacher, I was an assistant principal, I was a middle school principal, high school principal, central office for, you know, over thirteen years. You know, I've worked with enrollment, teaching and learning, school improvement, human resources, transportation, athletics, uh, you know, performing arts, um, you know, maintenance departments, negotiations, labor group, labor groups, um, policies, regulations, um, you know, been, uh, politically active, uh, you know, worked with budgets. You know, safety in schools, professional development, community work, all in a K twelve setting because that's where I want to be. I want to be in a K twelve setting and I want to, uh, you know, work in a public school system. You know, my experiences through the COVID nineteen will definitely help, uh, support students and staff in the fall. Uh, I was involved every step of the way, uh, at South Lion Community Schools. You know, we talked a little bit about the the lunch, uh, piece that I had to, uh, you know, make some difficult decisions. Uh, you know, I was the the person that was calling, you know, our administrators and just checking in. Hey, hey, how are you doing today? Uh, you know, how's your staff doing? What do you need? How can we help you, you know, get through this? Um, you know, those are the types of things that I was doing. You know, I was establishing meetings, uh, on the on the regular to keep in tune all the policies and procedures that I'm sure, you know, you've seen Mr. Arnett put in place. Uh, you know, all things COVID was was what I've experienced. And so I know what has been overcome and what the struggles are is we move forward to serve our students in the fall. That's all going to help me understand how we, uh, catapult forward. I provided, uh, you with some professional development that I've had. Uh, the the professional development that I have shown you, you know, that provides the K twelve, uh, support to to really work in the organization and be ready in my roles and my future roles. You know, in nineteen ninety-eight, I got a specialist degree. You know, I've talked a little bit about, you know, my, you know, my history. You know, I was certainly the first one to graduate in my family and obviously getting a specialist degree, uh, you know, was was unique as well. Um, one of the other passions I talked about is that of being a father. And at that point in time, I had to make a choice. You know, do I continue to further my education to have a doctoral degree? Or do I support my students, or excuse me, support my children, uh, as they move into the middle school years? And so at that time, I made the choice to, uh, you know, have a specialist degree, uh, continue my professional development in, uh, focused manner, focused ways to help me grow through the K twelve, uh, system. And knowing that when my children, now young adults, uh, make it through and they're successful, the attainment of a of a doctoral degree, if it's something I want to do, then I can I can do that, uh, you know, moving forward. Uh, and that has allowed me a lot of opportunities, a lot of growing that I think I would have not received if I would have, uh, you know, continued in in those types of, uh, college courses. So I'm I'm, uh, wanted to share some of that with you. I look forward to meeting the stakeholders tomorrow. Uh, I and I really look forward to, you know, talking, um, you know, my, you talking with members of, you know, the teams that I've been on, uh, in the past on Thursday. I you think you're going to really like the people. Uh, you know, as your superintendent, I will honor the past as we grow into the future. I think that's really important and and, uh, you know, I'm willing and ready to be part of the team that furthers the greatness, uh, at, uh, Lake Orion Community Schools.
Well, we appreciate your time, Mr. Kirby, and we, uh, and your continued interest in this, uh, position of superintendent of schools. We'll continue to keep you apprised throughout the rest of our dis- decision-making process and expect to be prepared to make our final determination on June twenty ninth, which is a week from today. Best wishes and thank you for interviewing with us again and, um, uh, have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Very good, it's been an honor and, uh, stay healthy and take care.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, we are at seven nineteen. We will take a ten-minute intermission here and we'll begin again at seven twenty-nine.
I think I missed my calling as a basketball timekeeper.
Perfect, you're perfect. Okay, we're waiting on Nate.
Uh, I'm here, it's not showing up.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Oh, all right. I didn't do anything different.
Okay, can you, can you see us?
Nope. Let me. I can, uh, I'm going to leave the, uh, audio connected and I'll just drop out and drop in so we can proceed.
Okay, great, I appreciate it. All right, so we will move on to our second interview this evening. And if we, uh, could invite Dr. Kessler in with us, that'd be great. Welcome.
Hello, everybody, good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education of Lake Orion Community Schools, I would like to welcome Vanessa Kessler back for the second round interview. Dr. Kessler is currently Deputy Superintendent for the Michigan Department of Education in Lansing, Michigan. And just to take a moment to describe our format, it's similar to our first round format. Interview may take up to seventy-five minutes. There will be fifteen questions. Most will be, uh, questions asked of all candidates this evening. However, some will be unique to each candidate. Toward the end of the interview, time permitting, we will give the candidate an opportunity to ask questions of the board and make closing remarks. As before, uh, Trustee Taylor will let us know if it's, uh, a time issue is on the horizon and if there's an issue so we can stay on pace. As the board hears from each candidate and weighs this critical decision, it will be doing so through the lens of a candidate profile that was developed with considerable input from our stakeholders. Our intent is to identify the candidate that best fits this profile, which board members have at hand. Audience feedback may be submitted through an online form found on the district's homepage. Although the task of choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of the Board of Education as representatives of our community, we value and consider the the input of our stakeholders in this process. While we are not seeking recommendations as to which individual should be hired, we would like your input as to the strengths and reservations about each candidate. And in tonight's format, rather than have, uh, board members read groups of questions, we're going to alternate questions and, uh, they'll just jump in, uh, at the where they're supposed to jump in. And I'll lead things off. Dr. Kessler, since deciding to become a candidate and participating in the first round of interviews, what have you observed and or learned about our district that has impressed you most favorably?
Well, how long did you say we had for this interview? Um, I think it could take seventy-five minutes on on that question. Um, I I'll narrow it down to a few things. You know, just like you all are learning about me and, you know, talking to people who know me, I'm doing the same for Lake Orion. And you have a great reputation in the state, um, when I call your ISD or other superintendents or community members. Uh, people really, the first thing they say is, wow, that's a great district. So, um, I've learned that you, uh, what Lake Orion has to bring is is well-known, uh, to people who know you. I've learned that you have a lot of, um, people who are loyal to the district over a number of years. So I know a number of you are alumni of the district, um, as well. And I've learned that you are very extensive in your programming. Um, I was spending some time in the last few days just looking at all of your offerings, both academic and extracurricular. I know I shared in my first interview how important I think it is that we offer excellent academics to students, but also opportunities to engage in the things that really bring them joy and allow them to connect with other students and connect with their passions and that school is really the place where they do that. So when I see all of your clubs and, um, athletics and fine arts and all the outreach, um, I love the service project in the high school, that that opportunity for students. I think that you have created a learning experience and a a community experience for students in the district that's that's very exceptional and very important. Um, very important for for students to feel like, like they have a place to be. That's not just a place to go to school. Um, I have, that's, I think that's three things. I have learned that, um, you have good relationships between the board, the community, the administration and your unions, your labor unions. And I think that's really important because it needs to be a collaborative effort between every, everybody in the district. Um, and the last thing I would say that I've learned is that you have some very exciting opportunities going on with your bond that you passed in twenty eighteen. And, you know, ten years and a hundred sixty million dollar investment, that's going to make an important difference in the district and its, uh, physical plant. But also, it's, uh, again, it's both its learning and its extracurricular and, uh, arts, athletics, opportunities for students, um, as well as a a sinking fund that was passed relatively recently. So that tells me that the community is very willing to invest in the district, which I think is a a major asset.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Kessler. I have your second question. You provided the board with a ninety-day entry plan. When you take a long-range view, what would be your vision for Lake Orion Community Schools? What would be the same and or different from what is currently in place three to five years from now?
So I think I have a couple of things I'd like to share along that that line, a three to five-year view. I think one of the the things that I would like, I would want to make sure we keep. And again, there's a lot to keep in Lake Orion, so, uh, I think that's important to note. I'd want to keep the diversity of learning experiences and opportunities, like I just mentioned in my last question. Um, I would want to keep the focus in the strategic plan on communication and also on, um, governance and and policies. I think those are things that don't always get the attention they need in a district, but they're really critical to the long-range health of of a, of a district as an educational enterprise. Um, and I would want to keep the strong focus on academics. What I'd want to add is intentional focus on, and I mentioned this in my previous interview, but it, I think it bears repeating, an increased intentional focus on the students for whom we may not be reaching. Um, when I looked at your data, and again, it's a little hard to look at just the data that is publicly available without the context of local data and a chance to talk with the team. Um, but I noticed that there can be some differences in outcomes by gender and by race, so digging into what what's happening there. And I also noticed that, um, your suspension and expulsion rate was just a little higher, again, on the publicly available data than comparable districts. So I'd want to ask questions and understand, you know, is that a data artifact? Is it real? What kind of, uh, practices do we have in place in terms of, um, student behavioral codes of conduct? What do we do in terms of restorative practices or other approaches aside from suspension expulsion that can keep students in school and, but also, um, kind of restore them to the school community? And, um, how how may or may not, my cat is joining in the interview apparently. I thought my dogs would be the problem, but it's it's my cat. So Chase says hello and go Lake Orion, go Dragons. Um, I'd want to, again, with the suspension expulsion, really think about, um, how those data point us to a larger discussion that may or may not actually be about suspension expulsion, but I'd really like to unpack that and make sure we have an intentional plan in place. Um, with ninety-six percent of your students going on to some form of post-secondary education, whether it's for your college, two-year college, vocational, military, you know, we're really matching post-secondary outcomes to kids very well. But again, trying to hone in on the four percent and anybody in that ninety-six percent who maybe didn't get their match that they wanted. So a strategic plan that continues on the strengths around, um, governance, communications, academics, um, and enhances the focus in those areas. And again, I think you, kind of one more piece on that. It looks like you have a really strong, um, financial structure in place. You know, I saw your fund balance is near ten percent. You've got those two, the bond and the, uh, sinking fund. I know that this next year is going to be an interesting year. So like we talked about in the first interview, really making sure that we're, we have, uh, great two-way communication between me and the board around where the finances are. And we make those short-term adjustments, but we keep looking. and we make those short-term adjustments, but we keep looking three years, five years for the investments we need to make as a district. Thank you.
Good evening. In any leadership transition, there is an opportunity to amplify existing successes and challenge some norms. Given that we are a destination district known for academic success, how will you go about building on strengths while progressively leading us to new heights that will set us apart from other districts?
I think the first thing, and I really like how you phrase that question about a leadership transition. You know, one of the questions I think people are always asking is, are you going to come in and tear everything down that we've been building, that we've been working hard to build? Are you going to make this all about, you know, yourself as a leader or is it gonna be about us as a team? And like you said, trustee Mermel, with the fact that Lake Orion is a destination district and has so much in place, I think it's even more critical than normal to to celebrate the successes that we've had and really understand them and really understand why those successes are important to everybody and what it took to get those successes. You know, it's easy, as a new leader, it's kind of easy, I think, to say, wow, this is a great program and potentially undervalue the hard work that went to make that a great program. So a number of people worked very hard to build out the pieces that make Lake Orion the district it is today. So number one, really getting a sense of the history, the who was involved, how we, and how we got that success, because I think we can parlay that into other areas as well. But then collaboratively, working with the staff, and I bet if you asked your central office, your principals, your teachers, your support staff, you know, what are three things you think this district really needs to work on? Everybody would probably have three things and they'd probably have some ideas about how to do it. So getting a sense of where we can fine-tune, where we can, what presidential campaign was it where there was a lot of talk of scalpels versus sledgehammers or something? It's that same analogy. We don't necessarily need a sledgehammer, but we do need to use that scalpel or those fine tuning instruments. And we need to be willing to challenge even things that are working well and say, again, I'll use your assessment data for a minute. You have really great assessment data scores on the M-Step and on PSAT and SAT. Your ELA is better than your math, so that would be a place for me to ask questions of the team. Why do you think that that's that way? Again, your math scores are higher than most of the county, but presumably our goal is 100%, not better than 20 districts or, you know, 15 districts or whatever. What are we doing already and what are our barriers? So kind of digging in and using data where we have it, using input from all the players I mentioned earlier, as well as, like I talked about extensively in my last interview, students. You know, hey, students, what do you like about math in the district and what don't you like? And what would help you feel more connected to your math education, more interested in it and more motivated to try hard? So I think it's that recognition of all the hard work, but also a recognition that we're not satisfied to rest on our laurels, to stay where we are and that we really want to be the top district, not only in Oakland County, but in the whole state.
Good evening, Dr. Kiesler.
Good evening.
Our Board of Education values inputs from all stakeholders. In your first interview, you mentioned that in general, there is a tendency to under-ask our consumers. Please share with us how you would go about including our stakeholders, especially staff, students, and parents as education continues to shift and evolve.
Thank you. I'd like to start with students on that question. And I did share some in my first interview about how I'm really passionate about student voice and hearing from, and that's who I think of as our primary consumers, you know, the ones who come every day for seven, eight hours, maybe more if they're in extracurriculars and spend it with us as a district. One thing I would like to do, and again, if this already exists, then I would love to use it. But if not, I would love to have student advisory councils to the superintendent. I think one per school, I would love to ask my administrative team and the school teams, the leadership, if that is sustainable. You know, I don't want to put up a structure that takes students away too much from their learning, but to hear from them very regularly, and I know that's, however, that's representative voices, you know, a student advisory council won't have all the students. So even if we work hard for representation, I still would love to implement, and again, if you already do, I did not see that you did this on your website, but you have a lot of information on there, annual surveys, student perception surveys of, in general, some metrics that we could track as a district, so satisfaction and engagement. But then each year targeted questions that have to do with programming and issues that the student advisory council raises. So if the student advisory council says, you know, students in this district really feel like we don't have enough healthy food options during the day, then maybe those are the type of questions we put on the survey the next year, you know, what would you, what would help you? What kind of food would you like to eat? What do you like about your school food? That could be a range of pieces. I did see, you know, spending some time on the high school website, so many opportunities to see students in places like the coffee shop or all of their clubs, or I hope I can get invited on the news channel at some point for an in-depth interview. But would love to connect with the students where they're actually at and what, while they're doing their activities, instead of making them come to central office or some, you know, boring old people place like a Zoom call. They love Zoom too, though, but anyway. Connect with them in places where they actually are and enjoy being. So that's students. Staff, I would also like to have, and again, if we have these, then I would build on them. I would like to have teacher advisory councils at each school. I do think that building principals and central office have more of an opportunity to interact with the superintendent just by nature of the structure of a district. So creating intentional ways for teachers to interact, I think, is really critical. And then again, a staff survey, teacher, so I'm sorry, I'm conflating staff and teachers, so let me talk about teachers and then the rest of the staff briefly. An annual survey of both teachers and staff, again, asking how satisfied, how engaged are you planning to stay? Why or why not? If you don't already do exit surveys of people leaving the district, that would be important to know. And then on the staff, as separate from teachers, I would love to sit with some representatives of the different support staffs at organizations, the unions and/or other organizations within the district and ask, you know, what's the best way? What do you really want from the superintendent and how can we build out those two-way communications? So I don't, you know, maybe monthly kind of coffee meetings, I do that currently with my division. I have monthly drinks with the deputy or brown bag lunch with the deputy, just to create a time where we can be together socially and casually. And that's helped me build better relationships with people throughout the organization. And then finally, parents. It looks like you have parent-teacher organizations already in existence, so getting, I would want to get involved with those and understand how they're currently collecting input from parents. It looks like also you do a good deal of asking for input from parents through community surveys, so continuing with that. But I'm a big fan of surveys of asking parents what they think. And then finally, for all of these, the importance of social media. I was brainstorming with my kids this weekend, I said, you know, if I were to get this job, should I have a Twitter account? Should I, what about Instagram? Should I have an Instagram? And we agreed I should have a Twitter and an Instagram, but I should leave Facebook behind. I think I mentioned this before, they always tell me that's where the middle-aged people hang out and I'm like, yeah, so it's a perfect place for me. Why wouldn't I be there? But I do think those are the places where people connect with each other. We all know that. And so having a presence and a two-way dialogue there, or at least a place to start a two-way dialogue, you know, social media isn't the best place for every in-depth conversation, but can certainly point us in the right direction.
Welcome. Your application indicated that you do not have a Michigan administrator's certificate. Please share why you have chosen not to begin this process as of yet and what your plan is for enrolling in and completing the process of becoming certified, excuse me, of becoming certified as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. So I do have a PhD, as we discussed in the previous interview, but it is not in Ed Leadership or Education Administration. I have thought about starting the process up until before now, but have not actually done it, largely because because life is very busy with two kids and my current job. I know life would be busy as the superintendent as well. So here is my plan. Michigan law does require that every administrator have a certification, but they also, between law and MDE's administrative rules, provide a process for people like me who have leadership experience, but not the exact correct piece of paper to become superintendents and stay within the legal boundaries. So I would work with your HR director right away to obtain a permit. That permit allows me to be an administrator for up to three years. I have six months to enroll in an administrator certification program and then three years to complete. And that keeps us within the administrator certification rules, as well as allows me to obtain that additional training. There are a couple of great options in the state, both accelerated programs through universities like Michigan State or alternative routes to certification through the Michigan Association of School Administrators. And that was my other thinking is that if I were to become a superintendent, that having that, while I was a new superintendent, being involved in the program right at the same time would actually be a great benefit because I would be able to come to the classes or to the cohort and say, well, this is what I'm facing this week. Or I could use, you know, my coursework could be advancing goals of the district. So it was, that's kind of my thinking about how and why I'll add this, this, these credits, this little bit more credentialing to my resume and get the appropriate certification while keeping the district in, on safe ground in terms of certification rules. Nobody wants to run afoul of the department in terms of that, as I well know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Dr. Kiesler.
Good to see you.
Thanks for taking time to talk with us again. How would you ensure that all students receive the guidance, support, and instruction they need to meet their individual needs from students with learning challenges to those who are advanced learners?
I mentioned in my previous interview, wanting to start by understanding a couple of things about our infrastructure in Lake Orion. One is our school counseling infrastructure. How many counselors do we have? What sort of things do they focus on? How involved are they in student education development plan, planning? I know in many districts and many schools, the ratio of kids to counselors is very high, so the counselors end up being very focused on scheduling or things like that, which is very important. But we, in education, we often ask educators to do too many things at once and then it's hard for that to be as done as carefully as we want. So I want to understand where we are there. I do think having caring adults who are empowered and given access to the structures of the district are important in helping kids have those individualized plans. So if it's not counselors, then is it coaches or principals or teachers or whomever it is? They have to be able to not only help the kids map out where they're at, their goals and desires, and then how they can use the courses, the opportunities within the district. So they have to have access both to the knowledge of the kid and the knowledge of the system. So that's probably a combination of roles and training. You mentioned students with learning disabilities. So I know, I see on your website, you have a special education department and a lot of great work going on there. You know, obviously, compliance with IEPs and 504 plans and all of the affiliated rules and regulations, as well as just thinking about and being very careful to meet the individualized needs of the child within those parameters is a whole body of work unto itself. And so I'd want to work with the special ed department, understand where they are, where we are in terms of, you know, state complaints or any pieces like that. Again, it looks like you have a really strong program, so I imagine that conversation would be more about building on success. But for that part of the individualized needs, I think it's both the philosophy of matching needs to child as well as the legal part of meeting all of the requirements of IDA and Marsh rules. And then continuing throughout different types of students, different types of learning styles, I think that individualized plan with a caring adult equipped with the right tools and knowledge is important. And then I think using those student surveys to do some checking, like how much do you feel like you have a plan that meets your needs? And when kids say, no, I really don't, you know, while we do great planning with everybody and we get, let's say we get 75% of the kids really on track, but 25% are like, I don't know, I don't like what I'm doing, or I said I wanted to do career tech stuff, but I don't like it. Or I don't feel like I've gotten an adult to help me, you know, really digging in and making sure we help those students find a better path. I also think it's important to use data. We talked a lot last time about data, assessment data and the pros and cons. This is a place where I think looking at some of those state assessments, but also importantly, the benchmark assessments, informative assessments, and other data on the child. You know, if a child has really high absences, that could mean they're really disengaged and we're not getting it right in terms of their program. Could also mean they're struggling with some barriers at home. Or it could mean they are a kid who needs a little more time to themselves and, you know, we want to think about how to tailor our education program that way. There's a lot of reasons for an absence, but again, if we use data as that early warning indicator as opposed to the ultimate determinant, it helps us ask better questions and tailor our work.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Please describe for us the budget development process that you would recommend for Lake Orion Community Schools and how you would account for uncertainties regarding enrollment and funding at the time the budget is adopted.
So I see on your website right now that you have a budget process that accounts or plans for two amendment periods. I think I would like to suggest that we build in three amendment periods, especially in the next couple of years, given the uncertainties around funding levels from the state and the federal government, as well as question marks around enrollment projections. So enrollment projections are incredibly important for a district to estimate its revenue streams. And I see that Lake Orion does a good job with its enrollment projections. But all of those models are going to have one big problem coming into this next year. And it's the unknown impact that COVID and parental choice about how and where to enroll children in school. You know, predictive models are only as good as the variables you put in and we have a big unknown variable this year. So I think for this year and the next year, probably acknowledging that we're going to have to have a more, probably have a more fluid budget. Also acknowledging that we still don't have a state budget and we are, as you all well know, much past when we normally would know those numbers. So, I'm trying to recap. Doing our best job with enrollment projections, I think we could use some data, the data you would normally use and then try to flex it for, you know, assuming a certain number of influx. I think if Lake Orion continues to expand its virtual options and has, you know, hybrid flexible options, I think you could actually attract more kids this year, particularly if we stand up a program that's attractive to parents from, in districts who aren't doing as good of a job, offering safe options that meet family needs. So we could, you know, do projections up a certain percent and then also down a certain percent. Interface that with the state estimated per pupil, as well as the federal sources. The federal sources should be known relatively soon, so that one at least will be a little bit more stable, but that's not Lake Orion's biggest revenue source. And then plan for those multiple amendment periods so that we can really stay on top of how many kids actually did enroll, how much money has come in, has there been another infusion of federal dollars? Has the state done something different? And have that adjustment period. I think, again, putting that in place for this coming year and probably next year, because financial impacts and budget development won't likely be limited to just this year. And then if we like the three amendments per year, we could keep that as our process. If we think we can stabilize back, you know, we could maybe consider going to two. But always looking at what we think, you know, those enrollment projections, the sources of revenue and what we anticipate our big expenditures to be. This year, obviously, there will be more expenditures in things like transportation, cleaning, PPE, you know, things that we don't normally budget for as a district. But I think we can estimate those costs with some degree of precision upfront. And then just, again, keep matching revenues to expenditures and having that regular conversation about where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What should we provide beyond the basics to ensure that all students, whatever path they may choose, are solidly prepared for success following their graduation from high school?
So I think the basics, I would take that to mean, you know, mathematical reasoning, the ability to read, know some facts and figures about science and social studies, so kind of a basic academic education. I think there's a few things that are really critical. One is, in addition to facts and figures, is that ability to do good critical thinking, good problem solving, and engaging with the world around. So again, when I was spending time on the website and I saw all of the the clubs that you offer, all of the the gap activities at the high school, you know, kids engaging in a variety of women in leadership, male leadership, cultural diversity, LGBTQ plus supports, you know, that diversity of interests coupled with the need for kids to take the world around them, the academics they're learning, and then integrate that into their own personal belief system, their actions, how beliefs translate into actions, and how they critically evaluate information about what they think and feel. You know, learning to ask that question, why do I know what I know, or how did I learn what I know? And is there something else to know? I think a lot of people have been, I mean, we've been talking very, been talking for years about it, but it's come to the forefront again, how so many of us learned a very certain version of history or a certain version of science or a certain version of facts. And so any, at any point in time, that is a cha, that it, that is a challenge the education system faces, right? Kids are going to learn a set of facts, but that may not be the whole story. And so teaching kids to be those critical thinkers, good questioners, and problem solvers. I also think helping kids have some very practical skills, things like financial literacy or life skills. You know, that has, there's a lot of debate about that at the state level, should it be required or not? I do think when I see, and probably every generation says this, right? Like, oh, kids these days, they don't know how to do anything. But I had an interesting conversation with my daughter over the weekend about mortgages. You know, what are they and how do you get one? How do they work? I think those type of practical skills are useful for for all kids. And we don't have a great place in the education system where we talk about them. And then the last thing I think is that, and I think I talked about this in my last interview, some sort of steps toward the next thing. So some credits, if they're going to be in dual enrollment or AP, or some work, you know, a career, a career tech certificate or steps toward it, career connections, apprenticeships, internships. I noticed that you offer a number of AP courses. I also noticed that your students got over $6 million in scholarships. I think this was from 2017, the video said, but I imagine that number is somewhat close still. So that's great, not just saying, hey, kids, you can be whatever you want, but actually helping them start to take the steps toward it and know, and have some money, have some credit. You know, that's often a lot of barrier to kids achieving their goals is it's, it's hard. You know, it's hard when you get out and you have to pay for things. And so I appreciate that Lake Orion has put that in place, and I I want to keep expanding on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have your next question. Many new theories, innovations, and philosophies have been introduced into educational delivery in the last decade. What new idea do you feel has been the most effective in improving learning?
Well, so this is an interesting question for me. As an educator, I tend to not be a big fan of educational theories. Or I think if you can write a book about it and say, just do these three things and you'll be a success, I just have my doubts. I think education is complex, it's situational. People who tend to have, who say they have all the answers, I think, how can you possibly have all the answers? We don't even know all the questions yet. We don't even know all the pieces. So I'm actually not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to pick one that I think has been terribly effective because I think that's just not how I tend to think as a leader and how I think about problem solving. But here's a couple of themes from some of the theories that I think have been useful for education. I do think that the infusion of the idea of strategic planning or smart goals or more thought to theories of action and delivery is useful. I think education is such a sprawling enterprise, and we're asked to do many, many things all at once. So asking educators to think through, we're going to do these actions. We care about this, so we're going to do these actions, and we think it's going to have these outcomes, and we're going to measure it this way, has has been good. I think there can be an overreliance on that, though, because not everything in education can boil down to a nice reductive data point or or a simple goal. But again, I think without the whole, if you focus on nothing, you kind of accomplish nothing idea, it's good to have that that focus. So I think that's been helpful. I also think the work, I don't know if you would call these theories, but the work around cultural competence in education, restorative practices, social justice, you know, shining a lens on the way the education system reproduce, if we can reproduce inequalities and racism, and asking us to think critically about that and change it have also been very important and will be even more important as we move forward. So that's kind of a mix of theories and and practices, but those are the ones that I think offer, those are the ideas that I think offer power. Although, like I said, I I tend to like to mix and match from ideas to make something that works for the situation I'm in and based on what my team thinks, you know. I think we've all been part of a, I imagine we've all been part of an organization where some leader says, we're going to follow the one, two, three steps to success program, and everybody's going to do this and this. But that program doesn't work well for our organization for some reason. It doesn't match kind of how we're built, or we end up jumping through hoops that don't help us. They just satisfy the program. So I definitely like to be a borrower and a stealer from the best parts of things and build that collaboratively with the team for something that really works for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Given your background in data and policy, there is an inclination to believe that this might be the focus of your superintendency. Well, these are important aspects of being a superintendent. There are many more areas that are equally important, if not more so. What do you believe these are and how will you effectively prioritize your time and attention?
That's a great question, and I I think it's very insightful because that really is a lot of what I've spent the last, last decade doing. So the areas that I think that are equally or more important, aside from data and policy, and by policy, I'm going to interpret that to mean kind of big picture ideas and planning and or that involvement with state level policy that I know your legislative advocacy does. So put those things to the side. I think some of the things that are really important for me as a superintendent, one would be relationships. I actually think relationships is probably the most important thing. I believe that a superintendent is only as good as her relationships and her trust that she can build with the community. You know, especially a community like Lake Orion that's tight knit and believes in the school system and believes in each other. You have to believe in me as your leader. And for you to believe in me, you have to know me and be able to talk to me and see me as a person as well as a educator and a parent and a community member and, you know, a pet owner, as has been demonstrated in this interview. She have to really, I have to, I have to really focus on relationships and trust. So that's, that's one thing. I also know that superintendents need to be involved in a lot of practical decisions that have important consequences. So where are the bus routes run and how the food service is delivered? And how the, the classrooms are configured? And how, you know, the facilities are taken care of and the athletic schedule? And who gets to use the Performing Arts Center? And all of those things may seem like logistics, but they really say a lot about who we are as a community and how we value each other and how I value the work. So I I see those as things that I have not had an opportunity to work on in the last 10 years because they're not decisions that are appropriately at the state. The things that I really look forward to getting engaged with, not to override the expertise in in the district. You know, I'm probably your transportation director is like, oh, she gonna draw my bus routes? Like, that's not helpful. But understanding the decisions that that they're making and how we can support them and how they support the goals of the district, and then just honoring them as important parts of of how we function. And the last thing, so relationships, kind of the the details. I think, I don't know if you put this in policy, but that really, that really directs support for students. So how are we supporting our students academically? How are we supporting them socially, emotionally? How are we supporting them at home in the community? And what barriers need to be broken for us to do that better? So I won't be in every classroom every day because I'm not the teacher. What do teachers need from the district to serve their students and the and the families better? And again, I think that might be dancing toward policy, but it's also pragmatism. It's not just high level ideas. It's really like, what do you need today to make today a great day for your students in this, in this classroom, in this building?
All right. Please tell us about how you have resolved complaints from a parent or guardian who thought a decision made by you or by someone you supervise had unfairly impacted their child.
I think that's a really important question, and I think these are very tough. And I I think about them from, you know, the multiple perspectives in that situation. And actually, I think many of us have probably been in all the perspectives, right? So we've been the supervisor, we've been the person who made the decision that made someone upset, and we've probably been the parent upset about the decision. And so one thing I've learned is that it's really important to get the perspectives and understand why everybody did or feels the way they do. So I do think it's really important to support staff in their decisions. I, as a leader, I mentioned that before. I'm not one to say, you know, to undercut people who have entrusted with the responsibility to do things. But I also think it's really important to understand why that parent is upset, what their motivation is, what, where they're coming from. If there is a, if there's a way to find compromise, you know, we find compromise. But again, getting, getting pieces of information from from everybody. So the question was specifically about how I have in the past resolved a situation where a parent was upset. So let me use an example from the department. We fairly regularly have to tell people that, I'll use this example. We actually get a lot of emails from parents who are upset that their college-age students haven't been able to pass the Michigan Teacher Test for certification. So we have to explain, in some ways, there's no good way to resolve it because the law requires that they pass the Michigan Teacher Test for certification to be a teacher. But we do try to spend time with the parent, listen to their concerns, also with the student. You know, in this case, it's a little weird because they're grown students. But we get a large number of parent calls about this, too. Offer opportunities, so explain when further test dates are, suggest, you know, study guides or ideas for preparation. But ultimately, you know, and I think the third thing is, my team doesn't give an answer that they know can't be flexible. So if we absolutely have to say no, we know we have to say no. If there is flexibility, we offer that flexibility, we offer what we can. And then, you know, in this case, if a parent really, if the child, students really struggling to pass that test, the MTTC, this is, that's a tough conversation because they do have to pass it by law, but we do want to offer those supports. If it's something where, so at the department, it's a little harder to, try and think of a good example where we are able to change or or find that compromise. Because usually, in that case, it's something that the district has done, and the parent doesn't like it and emails the state, and we don't have the exact authority. But again, as the district superintendent, I would find out what the exact situation was. Talk to the principal or whomever, talk to the parent, explain what had happened. If there is a need to have a conversation with the staff member and say, you know, I, I think, like, let's, let's think about what's best for the student, and have we considered all those options? If you really think so, you know, I understand that. But sometimes I think we have more paths than we see out of the gate, so trying to to find that that path forward. But it does come down sometimes to just explaining the reasoning and being transparent. And something we find, I find in my job at the state is that people do just want to be listened to sometimes. They want to know somebody heard them and understands their frustration, even if it can't be completely resolved. Thank you.
What, if any, concerns do you have about being superintendent of the Lake Orion School District? And beyond funding, what do you believe could be the greatest potential threat to your success? Thank you.
What concerns? I think one of my concerns is, and I mentioned this in my 90-day plan, that coming into the district at this point in time and needing to make what may be some tough choices without time to build relationships, that concerns me. You know, I do think that trust is important and relationships are important. I will be working to build those very fast, but we can't do it sequentially coming into this year. I'm sorry, can you repeat the second part of the question?
Absolutely, absolutely, and thank you. Beyond funding, what do you believe could be the greatest potential threat to your success?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think the greatest potential threat goes along with what I said about my concerns coming in. So I think when you're a new leader, it's easy to make missteps. And there's that, it can be easy to make a misstep or, you know, make a miscalculation. One of the ways you guard against that is you spend time listening, you get to know people, you get some trusted advisors within the district, and you say, hey, I'm thinking about this idea. You know, what, how would I do it? I think with potentially less time for some of that buildup, you know, I think one of the, the threats is that I will potentially make some early errors in judgment that are hard for me to undo. Now, I don't want to do that, but thinking a lot about how I will avoid that, you know, getting kind of a kitchen cabinet or get, really figuring out quickly who I can trust and call and say, I'm thinking about sending this tweet, is that going to be a disaster? Until you know the community, it's it's easy to kind of misjudge. But there's that adage or the, I think it's a research statistic that it takes five good interactions to overcome one bad interaction. So being a new superintendent in a time of a lot going on, you know, I don't really want to get in in a deficit of, of, of bad actions or missteps that I have to try to, you know, dig my way out of. I know a new leader has a lot to prove, and I am looking forward to the challenge. But when I think about what I'm planning to overcome, that's, that's probably the biggest thing, how I very quickly get a handle on relationships and how to communicate and pitfalls to avoid and be very transparent and open, but same time cautious and understanding things that I just don't know about the community and interpersonal relationships there.
Thank you.
How would you go about reaching governance team consensus when there are strong differences of opinion among members of the Board of Education? How do you do so in a way that respects these differences, strengthens relationships, and helps a diverse group of individuals to function as a highly effective team?
I think the, the first thing working toward governance team consensus is a clear articulation of the plan that I'm bringing forward or that my, my, me and my team is bringing forward and getting an early read from the board or the governance team on how, where people are on that. You know, are we far apart where consensus may not be possible? Or are we within negotiable range? And if we're far apart, then it's probably not a great plan. It's probably a plan that needs some, some rethinking. You know, the, you are a board of of seven, and so each of your voices is critically important. You were elected by this community to lead them and to lead the school district. So, you know, ideally, we can find plans that don't leave anybody completely out in the cold. So putting a for, putting a plan forward and finding where we are and then finding kind of what the non-negotiables are for people. I would not want to bring anything to you ever for a vote that I didn't know where the votes were and how much support we had. You know, I don't want to create situations where we force these split votes. If we can't find a plan that meets the needs of of most of the board, then it's hard to see that would meet the needs of the district. So transparent communication, assessing of where people are, assessing what the major concerns are. Is it a lack of information? Is it a positional difference? Is it philosophical? Is it like a negotiation piece? You know, where, where are we and and what can we do to create something that's closer to consensus? And probably I would want to work with the board president to think about what kind of a vote is too much of a split vote. So if we can't get there, you know, maybe if it's one person not on board, that might be okay. But again, I think in general, you want to, we all want to govern together as much as we can. That's, that's better for the community and students. So I think that that probably summarizes my approach.
Thank you.
If you are offered this position and accept, how will your commitment to Lake Orion Community Schools be evident? And how long we, what might we expect you to stay?
Um, so, you know, I, they say that people my age move around jobs a lot, but I've been in my last been in my last one for 10 years. I was, you know, the one before that for five. So I'm really, I'm a committer. I don't like, I believe in coming into an organization and staying long enough to at least get to know it and affect change, and that takes time. So while I won't put a, a number of years on it, and if there's some question there of how many years might you want me? I don't plan to be a short-termer in, in Lake Orient. I'd like to really have the time to build our relationships together and then see some success together. How will my commitment be evident? I think there's three big ways. I will be visible and present in the district. I think we talked about that some last time, but to elaborate on that a little, I will be, you know, not only in central office and in, you know, the meetings with, with that team, but in the schools, at the construction sites. I know you have a lot of construction going on right now, in the bus garage and in the food service areas and in the early childhood center and at the community meetings and, you know, the whole list. I would actually ask each of you, where are three places that I might not think to go that I should go? Within the actual district, it's like the physical plant of the district or the community, you know, maybe there's a local watering hole where I should definitely be on Tuesday nights or whatever. Well, how do I connect? How do I be visible? Get my, get all my spirit wear? Don't want to forget that. I was trying to figure out if I could rush order spirit wear for this interview tonight, but it didn't look like that was possible. So, sorry. Hopefully, I'll get a chance. So my commitment be evident, I'd be present, I'd be visible. And I think the other thing that people want to see about commitment is that you listen. So if people do talk to me, share thoughts, feelings, concerns, make suggestions, that I actually listen and do something about them, not just listen for listening's sake. You know, when you commit to a district, you invest yourself in, and you let people invest in you, and you show that that's a mutually beneficial investment in each other.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Kiesler, I have question 15 for you.
Okay.
Here it is. There is no more important and impactful decision for Board of Education than selecting its next superintendent. If we were to choose you, what is it about your leadership that would cause us to reflect five years from now and consider this to have been one of the best decisions we have ever made?
I think there are a couple of things about my leadership that will, in five years, make you extraordinarily happy that you picked me. One is, I know in your candidate profile, you emphasize having a leader who's collaborative and who is open-minded and who is willing to build on success and work toward greater success. And I think as you go through, hopefully, as you do the site visits with some of my people on Friday, you'll see that I'm not, I don't just say I'm a collaborative leader and open-minded, but I truly am, and I've lived that for the last, actually throughout my whole professional career in all my leadership roles. I, I also have had, you know, good opportunity over the years to maybe be less collaborative and see how poorly that works. So it really, not only is it my instinct, it's ingrained in me through a lot of practice. I think that I have, in addition to that collaborativeness, that open-mindedness, I have 10 years' worth of excellent connections throughout the state that I think will help Lake Orient accomplish some of its goals, accomplish many of its goals, and elevate the district and what the work you're doing to a new level. So, you know, knowing who to call it the department in Lansing and other departments of the, of the state, national connections. I think Lake Orient is a destination district and a district to, that people aspire to be part of, but I think I can really help you with that goal and move it forward. And maybe some places where you haven't been able to make as much traction as you want, I think I could add that. And I think that makes me a very unique candidate, that I'm bringing those type of connections and resources. And finally, I want to be a district superintendent because I want to work closer to students. I, I was looking through the website over the past few days, and I thought, I just want to go to this district. You know, I want to be here, and I want to do all these fun things, and I want to, but I can't go to the district as a student, but I, I would love to go there as a superintendent and, um, come alongside the staff and students and teachers and really continue to push and say, how can Lake Orient make sure that every student that walks across that graduation stage, first of all, that every student does walk across the graduation stage? And then that every student who, who does that can look back and say, wow, I had a phenomenal K-12 experience. It's really prepared me for what I'm doing. And again, with so many of you who stay involved, I think that, I think that is there, and that's a commitment the community makes, but it's something I share, share deeply as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes our questions for you. And this is an opportunity, if you have questions or, we have a few moments left for you to share your closing thoughts, we'd invite you to do so.
Well, I have 15 questions, so I'm gonna...
All right, we'll sit back and get ready.
I don't have 15, but I do have, I have two. I think I'll ask the first one, and then we'll, we'll see how time is.
Okay.
So I'm really impressed by the plan you've put together to gather so much feedback from community stakeholders, district stakeholders, and then people who know me. So I'm just curious how the board plans to integrate, how to consider that feedback. You know, President Wiedman, you said some in your introductory remarks, but it's a lot of feedback. So just curious about kind of the board's process and, and how you plan to, to use all of that.
Are you referring to the meetings this week along with our interview information?
Yes.
Well, we plan to meet on the 29th, and at that time, we're going to be reviewing all the information that was gathered along the way. That information will come to us as, as it develops, and we'll have an opportunity to interview, to review that prior to our meeting on the 29th. And then we will have full discussion on the 29th as to how we answer those additional questions we may have about you, your background, your candidacy, and, and develop our thinking at that time.
Great.
Would the other board members like to add anything to that? I gotta see them all here.
Looks like Trustee Singer has his...
Yes, Jake.
So that's the, the, one of the unique things about this is we all are seven people elected by the community. So we're all going to synthesize different portions differently. So I think it's hard to answer your question that way, other than to say that each person has to look at what factors are most important to them, what are they looking for, and then be prepared to have that open discussion and, you know, determine which candidate that the majority or consensus of us feel is the best for Lake Orient Community Schools.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Even. And also important is the feedback from the community that will be receiving and have been receiving, which is obviously tomorrow night, but we've been receiving a lot of feedback as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, I hope that gives you a little insight.
Yes, yes. I, I, I'm interested both as a candidate, but also just in terms, you know, somebody who really does value stakeholder input. I'm curious about kind of the process, you know, when you get so much feedback from different perspectives, it can be, it's a lot of information to take in. So I was just...
It really is.
Yeah. You guys have put a very thorough process in place, so good luck with evaluating.
Thank you.
I will ask my other question since we have a couple minutes. You know, you, a lot of your questions focused on opportunities for the district, but I saw those to be, and I know this is a much bigger question that I hope we have time to unpack together if I'm offered the position, but would be curious to know what the board thinks some of the major opportunities for the district are.
I'd like to open that up to the board. Any thoughts? Yes, Scott.
I just think that this board is, is willing for change and for improvement. I think that we have an awesome district, we have awesome people, and, but we're all realists, and we all realize that there's things that may be able to be done differently or, or tweaked a little bit. And I think that it's, it's a very exciting time. And, you know, I think that's, that's why we chose the candidates that we chose. And I look forward to the process.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any others? Yes, Nate.
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons why there's so many positives because there are always opportunities to improve, but the, the successes and the commitment that the leaders in the district have established in order to build trust with the community, to get programming on track, to really focus on the way we develop our teachers and we build our culture. There's a lot of things that are in place that are the reflection of solid leadership that are a matter of continuing. So it is an exciting time for someone new to come in because it truly is a build-on-a-success type of situation, which is probably why you hear more of that.
Thank you, Nate. Yes, Dana?
Um, yes, you referenced that, there's a number of us, there's actually five of us who are alumni of Lake Orient. I'm the youngest, sorry, guys, I got out you all, but, um, in my graduating class was about 300 kids. And now we're looking shy just of 600. So our district, and I did graduate 25 years ago, so I'll put that out there, but our district has seen so much like progress from where we are. We were in the Cirque building, which, you know, was the old high school, and now there's the new high school, it's over 20 years old. But that's where, you know, we graduated from. And so this is a district that passed $160, $160 million bond. That wouldn't have happened even 10 years ago, five years ago. So this district is just ripe for opportunity, and I think that our board is open-minded. When you bring opportunity to us, we're really going to look at it because we're hungry for it. And we're willing to look for, if it's a good opportunity, we're willing to make sacrifices and do what we need to do to bring the best to our students and to our community.
Thank you, Dana. Any others? I will say that I, I believe that with the team that we have in place across the district, that with the challenges we face in looking at education in the midst of the virus and the pandemic and all the aftermath and the ongoing challenges, that I think the flip side of that coin is that we will discover some pretty new and exciting approaches to education because of the great staff that we have in place right now. Any other questions? All right, I will turn it over to you for any closing thoughts.
Thank you. I really don't have an extensive closing statement. I, and I, I had actually thought through one, but your excellent questioning hit a lot of the things I was going to highlight. So I will just close by saying that every piece of information I've gotten about this district has been so positive. I applaud your, I don't know how many, how many of you on the board were here when you hired Superintendent Chenopoulos, but her leadership has been very praised around the state. People speak highly of her as a leader, so you made a good choice the last time. You are spoken highly of as a board. You know, a trustee, Marjorie, you, you said this board's willing to have ideas brought to you, and that is what your colleagues around the state have said about you. So I think it's not just an interview tactic to share that with you. I do want you to know that because it sounds like you work really hard to, to be that as a board. And so as someone who wants to be the superintendent and work for you and with you, that is great. I, I love hearing that because it tells me that we could work together to do some really exciting things for Lake Orient students and to be a model for other districts in Oakland County and in the state. You know, I think everybody in education is looking for those districts to step up and say, hey, you know, it's not like we have that theory that'll work for everyone, or maybe we will write our three-step book together, I don't know. But people are looking for educators who can say, we had this, and so we did this, and here's how it worked, and here's why it didn't. And especially in this time coming out of the pandemic, to the points made, you know, there's a lot of really exciting opportunities, and I think that we could do great work together, the board and me, as well as the team in Lake Orient, your administrators, your teachers, your sports staff, and students and parents. So I hope to, I, I'm excited about this week and all the chances I have to interact with different perspectives, and I hope that, I hope that we'll have a chance to keep working together for a long time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kiesler, we sincerely appreciate your time and your continued interest in being the superintendent of Lake Orient Community Schools. We will continue to keep you apprised throughout the rest of our decision-making process and expect to be prepared to make a final determination on June 29th on our next superintendent. Best wishes. We thank you for interviewing with us again, and have a very good night.
Thank you. Good night to all of you.
Thank you. All right. So, that being said, that leads us to our next steps, and I will turn it over to Jen.
Well, it's, it's a very full week, and it should be a very enlightening week, I would expect as well. Tomorrow and Wednesday, tomorrow we'll be with Mr. Kirby, Wednesday with Dr. Kiesler. Each of them is going to be engaging in a question-and-answer session, 12:30 each day with administrators, 1:45 with staff members, and 3 o'clock with parents and community members. Those folks have been submitting questions, we've been collecting those. I'll be asking the candidates those questions, they'll have a chance to respond over the course of an hour. People within those groups will have an opportunity to listen in. And we're, of course, strongly urging all participants to follow up, to make it as worthwhile as possible by providing written feedback to the board so that you have the benefit of learning from their perspectives and can consider that as you face the critical decision that you do. Then Thursday and Friday, when we talk about site visits, normally we talk about board members going to the work sites of the finalists and visiting. In the age of COVID-19, we can't do that, so we're doing so virtually. Fortunately, we've had the opportunity to test this out in a couple of other districts. It's gone exceptionally well. Expect it will this time, too. So three of you will be on both Thursday and Friday mornings. Thursday morning will be again for Mr. Kirby, Friday morning for Dr. Kiesler. They're arranging for groups of key stakeholders in their districts to be present and to be able to answer questions that you're going to pose for them. We'll be recording that so that we can share that with the four board members who will not be directly participating, and it'll be one more important piece of data for you to have, again, as you wrestle with this very large decision that's facing you. So it's a very full week, but it's a very critical week in the process, and it should really, by the end of it, put you in a position to have a heck of a lot of data at your disposal as you, again, work hard to weigh the decision that you have and make the one that you feel is best for Lake Orient Schools.
Okay. So questions for Jen before we wrap things up here, Dana?
Um, thanks, Jen. My only question is about the parent and community meetings. I know you said those are going to be 60 minutes apiece on Tuesday and Wednesday at 3 o'clock. How can we view those? Are those going to be recorded for us to view, or is it going to be a live thing on, on TV? Or are we not able to view those? How is that going to be?
You can't participate, but you can view them. So if you have not yet received the link to be able to log in, the login information, we can make sure that you get that, be as simple as...
Okay, so just come on and then do what you guys do, and just go into a blank screen, and it'll just show our name on the bottom or on the square.
I believe the district is arranging, and I can't remember the name of it now.
Julie.
Julie better than I can, but it won't be kind of with this, we're going to be able to see all of the boxes and see others. I see Julie there, too. Julie, why don't you go ahead and jump in? You can explain that better than I can.
Uh, so tomorrow, we will be using the same, a similar Zoom format, but it's a feature called webinar. So only John and the candidate will be, I guess, assigned as a panelist, so they will really be the only ones that you can see and hear. Any other individuals that participate will be as guests, and they will not appear on the screen at all.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. So you'll send us that, Julie, or have you sent it to us already?
I have not sent it. I, I was not, until this discussion has taken place, clear. I thought that the sessions were just going to be for the individual groups and that we weren't having crossover with other groups or participants being involved in that, and that the loop would just be for those participants to get feedback through the, the online form. So...
Well, I think I would agree with you on that. We, we said that with administrators and... Well, I think I would agree with you on that. We, we said that with administrators and staff that, that would not be a, a setting that we would be in.
Okay, but so public is a little bit different. You would like the opportunity.
Public, we would like to be able to at least access it. Yes.
I, I will give.
That makes sense, Dana.
Yeah, it does. Now it makes sense. Okay. Yeah, I knew for administrators and staff, we weren't, but I thought we were for the public. So, all right, thank you.
All right. Yes, Jake.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that we can see that because that'll give us a chance to see how they directly interact with public, you know, concerns and questions and, and comments. Obviously asked by John, are those going to be recorded and available to us? Because being at 3 o'clock, it just so happens that both days I am no, I am not available at 3 o'clock, but I, I definitely want to view those sessions to help.
Mark can answer that. Mark?
We can record them and then provide them, provide you a link at a later point in a protected area that wouldn't be available to the public.
That would be great. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. All right. Other questions for John, first of all. All right, hearing none. If you have a closing comment, would you raise your hand? Seeing none. Another productive night. I want to thank all of you for your efforts in this endeavor. And we have a full week ahead of us and it will allow us to take a good, hard look at things come next Monday evening. So I wish you all well. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.